Calling the Board of Selectmen meeting to order, December 21st, 2020, 7:00 PM. Just want to do a quick roll call since we don't have a full house here right now. Jennifer Gill, Kevin Toret.
Yes.
And Ralward.
President.
Erica Blake for Selectmen, Town Administrator Peter Caruso.
Yep.
Okay, get this ball rolling. Um, so first item announcements, I don't know if we have any, I didn't see any in particular come through my box.
No, nothing. We'll talk a little bit when we get to the Board of Health update, talk about Town Hall status.
Okay, alright. I did not see meeting minutes come through.
That's correct. Don't have those yet, so I'll have to put those off until the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Do we have any correspondence?
No, nothing beyond what you have as agenda items.
Okay, sounds good. Do we have anybody on from the Board of Health? I don't see anybody on in the meeting, but do we have anybody in public forum area? Alex?
Sherry said somebody was coming on, but maybe that didn't happen.
Yeah, I thought Bobby was gonna be here, but.
Okay, well, we are flying through. It's only 7:01 and he was like the. Item down, so if he does join later, we will let him speak on behalf of the Board of Health. So. Peter, do you have anything that you want to touch on? Do you want to see if Bobby joins us?
Yeah, so the Town Hall, we are turning it into a fortress for the next few weeks, basically, which means that we're closing the ice cream window. And we've actually had to change sort of the structure of the hours of folks so that we're really dealing with only three people in the building at a time. And we're staggering the times when they leave and come back in, you know, later in the day, so that people don't intersect with each other. One of the drivers is, of course, what's going on in the world as you see in the news. But also, we've actually had two people in the last week who have been exposed as technically defined by our Board of Health's Public Health Nurse. Exposure is where you've been with someone who has been tested, who has tested positive and you've been with the person for 15 minutes or more within six feet without a mask. That's the technical definition of an exposure which would put you into quarantine. And so we have family members of people and whatnot that have had to, you know, basically hole themselves up. And so we, we, we've decided that the best way is a caution for the time being. So that's.
So are we working on appointment only as of right now at the Town Hall for all?
That's correct. And those appointments will have to be actually outside of the building. And to the extent someone does want to go into the building, they have to touch base with me first. So, for example, today, the chief had to go into the building and he called me first just to make sure that that was okay.
Okay, are we putting an announcement on the PD?
So we'll have Sherry do one of those, yes, one of those calls out there. We do have it on the website. There's signage out there and so forth, so.
Okay, we can also use the police department sign as well because people do see that when they drive by.
Yeah, that's a good idea. That's a great idea. I didn't even think of that, yeah.
I hate, I know a lot of people who want to get business done when they're on vacation time. I could foresee people being on vacation in the next week or so and they want to get items. I don't want anybody to not get service.
To accommodate, but again, it's to protect, you know, and I, and the way I've tried to do this is there's one person in particular I consider my canary in the coal mine. I don't want that person, if that person stays healthy, I think everybody will stay healthy.
Right.
Well, I'm really trying to do that. And it protects our residents as well because I think it is swirling about there. From what I understand now, the health nurse is no longer reporting to the Board of Health when she gets notice of someone who's been testing positive. So, right now, I think our information at the Board of Health is lagging reality. So we really don't know how many people have been infected in the last couple of weeks. Like, it just is certainly clear that this is a rough time and with the holidays and we can't control what folks are doing family-wise and so forth. It seems like the way to go. And it's consistent with what the schools are doing as well.
Right, yeah, the schools are fully remote until January 11th in Blackstone, Millville right now.
Right.
Alright, so if Bobby pops on, if you want to let us know, Alex, and we will let him give us any highlights that he may have. Alright, I think that's it for that item. Next, we have annual license renewals. We have a list. The latest list, I think we got this afternoon for things that are outstanding for certain.
That's right. So you've got a list of outstanding. I actually just sent Sherry knocked this out literally 15 minutes ago that one page or a little more than one page, listing of each of the licensees, the type of license, and she's included in red. What's still open. And so some are complete, others are, have one or more items that remain to be finalized before we would issue them the license or give the license to them. So I think at this stage, rather than having another meeting between now and the end of the year, if you did a provisional license, provisional to, you know, or subject to all of these items being complete in the file. As an example, one of them requires a Cory, I'm going to be doing that tomorrow. One or more require an inspection by the fire department or the billing inspector, and they've been exchanging, you know, times to do that. So we think we'll have everything in place before we would release the actual license that, you know, we would be asking the board, I think, to vote to have the chair sign off on the license, okay?
So in the past, just to let some of our newer members know what we've done in the past, these always come down to crunch time in the last week of the year. We can either approve them provisionally. And once the punch items are complete, then we can, I can sign off on them. We can hold another meeting at the end of next week and come back and approve them. Or if we don't approve them before the end of the year, then they can't do business. Which we don't want to do that because some of these items are not at the fault of the owners, I'm guessing. So in the past, our past practice was to provisionally approve, then once the items were complete, we would sign off on them. A little bit different this year because I would go down and sign off as opposed to having all of us go to Town Hall since we don't want all of us at Town Hall. So, anybody have questions or comments?
I didn't, I didn't see the list. Is anybody fully compliant, complete with their punch list?
Yeah, so Potbelly Pub is complete, Uxbridge Auto is complete, Andy's Auto and Sales is complete. Mill Tavern Pizza requires a business certificate renewal. George's Variety Store is waiting on a building inspector inspection. Polish American Club requires a fire safety certificate, the Cory that I'm going to do, and an ABCC officer's employee listing. It's a form they fill out. Millville Motors requires a fire department inspection. And Marty's Fine Lines requires a building inspector inspection.
So if anybody would like to make a motion to vote on these items, I'm more than happy to go down and sign after the light items are complete. And then I'll sign them then. If, if they're not complete, obviously, I won't sign them. But it saves us a meeting for next week. Otherwise, we'll book another meeting for next week. If you guys want to hang on on New Year's Eve, we can do that.
As tempting as that is.
Right, right.
Um, so I will make a motion that we provisionally approve these license renewals and allow for Erica Blake to sign these once the outstanding items have been completed and licenses can be granted.
Looking for a second?
I will, I'll second that, Erica.
Okay, any discussion? Alright, well, in favor?
I.
I.
Andrew, I didn't hear you.
I.
Okay, 4-0. So, Peter, you and I can communicate over this week. And I'll come down and sign the ones that are complete towards the end of the week. And if I have to come down next week again and sign the rest, I can do that as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright. Next item we have is the CARES Act, the BMR request for funds. We booted this off, hoping that we would have new news from the state or feds. Do we have anything new on that item?
We don't have anything new except to say that some of the chatter says the, 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 it's likely to be extended. Okay, not that they're going to add new CARES Act funds, but that we'll be able to continue to use what we do have available. Which, if that's the case, then I continue to recommend just the select items on the list that I had highlighted at the last meeting. If we get to the end of the month and we, they haven't extended it. Arguably, we, we have right now about $117,000 of our CARES Act monies remaining. We're probably going to use at least, you know, seven or eight of that, based on what I know right now, which will, it's really using to pay health nurses and I don't know what else. You know, there's one piece of equipment that we're going to get. So we could quickly get down to 100 grand, which is, you know, to the extent they allow extension of it without supplementing it. You know, who knows what's going to happen over the next six months or nine months. If anybody can predict that, you know, they're, they're better than I am. So I, I hate to, you know, hesitate to jump to put all this money out for, you know, the requests that you've seen and rather stick.
So what was specifically requested from the school that would still be impactful at this point in time, considering I know that they went fully remote for four weeks? What would still be impactful that they would still need?
So they've gone ahead and purchased tents and they're looking for, you know, for various schools. So they've already spent the money. They're looking for us to reimburse them for some or, you know, some portion of what they've spent money on. They've spent money on Univents or, you know, items to circulate the air. They did do some duck cleaning, which again, the risk is that's deferred maintenance that they're catching up on. So that's, there's a little risk there. They purchased some HEPA filtration machines, again, to provide clean air. They did some air quality testing. They purchased some storage containers. They've got renovation to a nursing suite, which, at the high school. They did some doors and security for the central office at the high school. So some of those, you, you know, they've made the judgment, those are CARES Act qualifiers. But I don't know that that would be, I would come to the same conclusion in all of them. But again, the ones, so what I highlighted was just specifically for MES.
Right.
There is a little bit of a murkiness, and maybe that's not the right word. But when I talked to my, you know, Dan Keys over next door there in Blackstone, I spoke to him this afternoon about this. And, you know, he expressed concerns that this could be argued as, as an assessment of sorts. And we're not treating it that way. He thinks it could be treated that way in some fashion, and I don't fully understand that. But my point is that I'm, I'm comfortable with the amount and the discrete items at MES. As equipment that are COVID-related and reimbursing them for them. And I would require that they provide us an invoice with the specific items listed and backup for those items. Which is consistent with the approach we took, for example, with BVT.
Yeah.
So Peter, why are we not comfortable with anything at the middle school or the high school? Just because those are shared resources?
Right, so if you, if you were, because I'm really just trying to limit the amount that we're dispersing. And I used MES specifically because it's our building, if you will.
Yeah, sure.
And, and the amount I was comfortable with of the remaining resources that I'm hoping we'll be able to continue to utilize from the CARES Act. If we, the approach they've taken here in the, you know, it was a conversation with Dr. DeFalco saying, would you be willing to provide some additional funds under the CARES Act? I said, yes, I'm not sure how much, but if you've got some discrete items. And, you know, Matt provided this schedule, which basically picked up all this stuff and then used the, you know, breakdown between the towns based on, you know, head count. So again, I think some of the items are quite, maybe, I would not be as comfortable with if we were doing it ourselves, for example.
Peter, you bring up an interesting point with it maybe an assessment type of situation. And the, that's the only reason I'm asking, did Blackstone do a contribution?
No, so it's one of these chicken or the egg, you know, they're looking to see what we do.
Oh, they're always waiting on us.
And absent us taking action, they might still take some action, but I think Dan's thinking is it could be argued to be an assessment of sorts.
Right, right. I'm not sure if that's.
I don't know either. And I don't want to, you know, chase down lawyer, you know, they, I guess he's talked to a legal counsel. I don't want to be doing that unless you all think it is worthwhile. I think the real thing is thinking in terms of what level of comfort you are to, to utilize a limited resource that, you know, is more than 50% likely to be usable for the foreseeable, you know, the months ahead of the continuing COVID challenge.
So unlikely to happen, but if on December 30th, we get a note from the state saying, give us the money back that you haven't spent, what, what is your plan of action?
So then I, I think you could take, my thought was that if that happened and we got to a certainty that give the money back unless you use it. Then I would argue that we would try to provide the bulk of this. But again, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with those last two items on the list.
Right, understandable.
Yep. So I would say, you know, take, removing those, then doing our 28%, if you will, and there's the number. And so you could make a motion to do either or and qualify it for adjustment for a couple of items as indicated.
I mean, we can just do a flat amount as well. There's no rules around this right now, so.
But, but again, I think, you know, I've only identified the items, like, again, I say, I don't think duck cleaning is necessarily a qualifier. I think there's exposure to that type of an item.
So did they have these HEPA filtration systems in the school previously?
No, not that I know of. So, though, but I think those are, you know, discrete items.
And what was the cost on those? I don't have the list in front of me.
So the HEPA filtration machines are 1,600 bucks at MES, 10 grand, 10, five in total for the school system. The vent work is about 3,700 bucks for MES, about, I don't know, 35 grand total for the school system. Tents were 15 grand total for the school system, 3,700 bucks for MES. And air quality testing was about nine grand total and 1,800 for MES. So those are the items that I'm comfortable with. I'm not comfortable with HVAC duck cleaning. I'm not comfortable with nursing suite renovation. I'm not comfortable with doors and security for central office move. And, and frankly, I'm not comfortable with storage containers because I don't know what, I mean, those are arguable, but.
Yeah.
Those are, those don't go either.
What was our contribution already from our CARES?
25 grand for the temporary teachers or the part-timers.
So we gave 25 so far of the CARES.
And we actually, yeah, that's what you approved previously.
Right, right. Just want to make sure we're all on the same page here.
Yep.
And so if we approved just what you highlighted, for instance, and that would go to the state to review whether that qualified, correct?
That's correct. So we, on the, on the, actually, the feds will have the right to come in and audit all that we've spent on CARES Act, of CARES Act funding. Everything we've so far spent money on has been items we've put forth to the state people to review and approve and provide the funding, you know, distribute the monies. And that happened in two tranches. Always subject to federal approval. So these transactions would also be subject to federal audit, if you will, of Millville for these disbursements. And if they kick something out, then we gotta have somehow find the money to have, to cover it, basically.
Okay. So if anything gets denied, we have to find the money to pay for that, whatever it may be.
Yep.
Oh.
And I, you know, I don't, I know, I can't tell you whether that's, whether we're likely to be audited. And I can't tell you whether anything we've done is, you know, of great risk. I think, you know, we've been pretty clear with the state what we've requested. We try to adhere to that. So I think we're okay.
I agree. We have to be careful.
Because, you know, there is a, you know, Key said to me, and I don't think the way he does in many respects, and I, but I, I do respect his input. You know, he said, Peter, they can come back five years from now and chase you down personally. Me and of course, the other signatory on this.
Exactly, exactly. And that's why I want to make sure our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed, so.
So we're trying to do that as best.
We want to be helpful, but we also need to be cautious and careful because this is all new waters we're in right now.
That's right.
All these regulations are new, so it's not.
And it's challenging because you can't get a straight answer. And, you know, that may not be the right word. But, you know, out of folks at the state, they're not going to give you specific answers other than we approved or we didn't approve the thing you put in for. So, for example, in our last request, as you may recall, we put in for, I don't know, 26,000, 28,000 of radios. Which, to me, make perfect sense as CARES Act related because you want, we wanted the radios for all, you know, I would get one, you know, one or more of the board would get one. So that we're all able to communicate in a time of crisis, which the crisis can continue and could be worse, who knows? But they kicked that out. The state kicked that out.
Yeah, so I agree. I mean, I think if, if we have the excess funds, we, we should contribute something. But we need to be very careful, careful what we contribute to. Now, when we contributed the 25,000 previously, did we earmark that per se on their budget for spend? Or they were just taking it and they were going to submit under their name, BMR, and?
Well, so actually, we haven't given them the money. It's been approved. I'm actually waiting for an invoice from the school for our portion of that.
Okay, okay.
And again, so if you take BVT, three, it took three go rounds with their financial people to get me what I deemed as necessary, which was an invoice from BVT to the town with backup of the specific items that we were reimbursing them for. They initially were trying to get us to buy the things direct from the supplier, but that got too confusing in my view, you know, who owns the item? We're not purchasing it. We're reimbursing them under the CARES Act for the item, so. That's where we're at.
So Peter, if we kind of just basically pump the brakes right now and, and don't really necessarily do anything, but we just kind of take the slow roll and see how this thing turns out, what, what, what's the negative to that?
Well, the school needs, you know, would benefit by having some knowledge, but you're right, there's no urgency to this, quite frankly. That's a very good question.
It's that unknown deadline. There's a deadline right now, Kevin, that we have to spend the money by December 30th, I think the deadline is.
Yeah.
But the rumor mill is that that's going to be extended. But if it's not extended, whatever money we haven't spent, we have to give back. That's the negative and the unknown.
Right.
So I, I guess essentially, we can wait until the very last minute. And if there's no indication coming down the pipeline that things are going to change, we can go, okay, let's do this.
Right.
We would have to meet again, right?
Yeah.
Well, that's a given, but it's, that's, you know, it's a five-minute meeting to say, yes, we're going to go ahead and do this.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I fully understood what, what the implication was.
Yeah. And that deadline, Peter, is that the 30th or the 31st?
It's the 30th, that's correct. It's the 30th. Now, there is a, they call it a reconciliation period, but all, all the transactions have to have taken place before the 30th. When you pay them, it can take place afterwards into, you know, later part of January, basically, so, and we would be.
So we have to cut a check to BMR for, on the 30th? Or we just, yeah.
Yep, yep.
So we really would have to decide before the 30th.
Well, we could have it in standby.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can schedule a meeting.
Not release it, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we can do a couple of different things, do nothing. We can schedule a meeting for the 29th, so if we do get the news that, yes, it is going to be cut on the 30th, then we can meet and decide if we want to give something. Or if we find out that they are going to extend it, we can discuss it at our January or February meeting.
Right.
I think there's just so many unknowns right now. As usual, when you're dealing with the federal and the state and then the town. And then a regional school district. I'm okay with scheduling a meeting on the 29th if we need it. If the 30th does become the hard deadline.
I can meet on the 29th.
Yeah.
I can do that, too.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Let me just check what day that is on.
It's a Tuesday, it's Tuesday tomorrow.
Alright, so we have time to post then.
So, so Peter, do you know what other towns are doing? Not like, Blackstone's kind of waiting to see what we're doing more or less, but do you know any other towns with their?
I don't know if other towns are doing this sort of thing with their regional schools. I, you know, I don't know that. I think everybody's kind of waiting and seeing, waiting to see what happens here. So in terms of how they're spending. I, you know, some towns have, I mean, I don't know, you know, I just don't know. It's almost like you can't spend it fast enough. And that, that, that kind of bothers me, actually.
Yeah. So on the 29th, would an evening meeting be better for everyone here or?
Yeah, I mean, I can do almost any time, but I think evening would be easier.
Yeah, I have that week off, so it doesn't matter to me. Alright, so we'll make a meeting, schedule tentatively the 29th, 7:00 PM for one item. And if, if the, if we get the extension, we'll cancel the meeting. Peter will let me know and then we can cancel the meeting because then we're not going to need to have it. Sound good to everybody?
Yep.
I like it.
Alright. Any other items we want to discuss on this request and 6B here? Okay, we can move on to the next item, consideration of shared planning of an IMA relationship update.
I put that in there. If there was anything to update on, there is not right at this moment, so.
Okay.
No action.
Okay.
Table that for a future meeting.
Alright, sounds good. Next item discussion regarding FY '22 budget guidance. We kind of touched on this at the last meeting, I think, or the meeting before.
Yes. So I, it does, I did add one thing in particular, which is in the exceptions, item four. I, I sat in on a planning meeting the last week. I watched a planning meeting. I wasn't a participant on the Zoom call, so I streamed it. But it's clear to me they need to, because there were discussion of the shared planning thing and because of some of the things that have directly impacted stuff that I interact with. So for example, what's going on, you'll get, I'll update you later about, you know, lifted luxury and that sort of thing. It's clear that the shared planning resource within their current budget will be a challenge. And they're already challenged with the, you know, resources they're currently using. So my recommendation is that they reevaluate their, their personnel resources to, to be able to do what they do. It's hard to do much as a planning organization when you've got stuff going on and you've got a $14,000, you know, human resource budget there. So I, I put that in, doesn't say an amount or anything, it's just, they, they should take a closer look on what their real needs are. Their current thinking is six hours a week is what they're likely to get under the shared planning. There is some discussion of a need for some administrative support. And, you know, we're, we're running pretty light as it is. So that was the new item I put in there. You'll also see under item three on that second page, I put in, please note, BMR must, and I use the word must, include a material and meaningful contribution to its OPEB liability and its FY '22 budget. We did discuss that. Jane was in on the call. Made note that they're going to be looking at that. But I'm trying to see if we can get all that done within the guidance range here because, you know, otherwise, we're talking different things.
Right.
We're having to live beyond our means.
No.
So, and I've shared this, I provided this to Aubrey Finance Committee Chair. I haven't gotten any feedback yet. But it is, you know, fairly consistent except for a couple of those items that I mentioned with the approach we took last year that both the. With the approach we took last year that both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee thought made sense. All of it is contingent upon, it's, it's acting in a post-COVID world that's not too dissimilar to the pre-COVID world in terms of what the state does. And there's real risk to that. So, you know, this qualifies that in, in the lead up right off the bat, basically.
Peter, I didn't notice anyone in there. Did you talk about? Any of the departments putting in a request for a tax work off, senior citizen or veteran?
I did not.
Might be a good time to just mention it to people so they can kind of put a request in saying, I need somebody for this five hours a week. So we can kind of start, now I'll talk about this a little bit later in the.
I think you want to talk about this later and maybe that's the better place to talk about that. I don't know that it really impacts the budget. You know, we know that you, the board has approved ten thousand, to the extent, which is, you know, seven and three, basically, seniors, seven. Veterans, three, who could also be seniors. To the extent the board wants to change that number, it would influence a little bit on the budget, but it's not. You know, that's sort of outside of this guidance for the.
Right, but as they're thinking about their needs for budget, it's also a good time to think about your need for other items. And necessarily it may not be budget, but if they're thinking, I need an admin three hours a week, it might be a good time for them to put in a request to you or however we're going to handle that.
You know, again, we'll talk about that in terms of what, the way I've been thinking about it. Discuss with the senior.
Okay.
Director, so.
Any other discussion on budget from anybody?
So you're in general support of this approach?
Yes, it worked well last year.
Have yachts and all that that I have built in.
Yeah, I, I like it. I liked how it flowed pretty smoothly last year. People, I think, I think people appreciated the guidance. They might not have liked it, but I think they appreciate it. So they weren't just reaching for the stars and pulling stuff out of the sky.
Yeah, and I think every department, including working with the schools, you know, everybody worked well under this guidance. So I, you know, hats off to all folks for trying to stick to that. I think they're realistic about Millville's resources available. And the appetite of people for going beyond their need.
Yeah.
Which is limited.
No, I liked, I liked how it ran last year and I'm, I'm all for it again this year.
Good.
Anybody else have any input or questions?
Nope, I think we're on the right path.
Thank you.
Alright, next item.
Don't have an updated list for this, so I'm gonna, we're gonna put it on the next meeting, the January meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I do want you to think about, I think this past year, we had one meeting in July, one meeting in August.
That's what we typically do.
In your packet showed two in August. But, you know, it's really just thinking about, and I've given some thought, so you'll see an actual draft of this. I didn't want to push Sherry too hard on this one today. You know, and when we put, take for example, the, you know, July. July fifth, you know, is the first Tuesday after the holiday. And whether that's too close, whether you want it in later, that, that's, so just give some thought as you look at what's in your packet. And think about next year and these holidays. We typically, on the Monday holidays, you know, we'll have it that next Tuesday. And that has seemed to have worked pretty well.
So I think that will work just like we did last year, August and July. I believe we did one meeting each. And I think we might have even called another meeting for small items that came up and that worked pretty well.
Yep.
So I think one thing did come up last year, and I can't remember, Andrew, you may remember. The town polls, the ballot, I can't get the words out, the voting, the election. That's the word I'm looking for. I think last year it was on a Board of Selectman meeting and I can't remember if it was in the previous years. I think Andrew had brought that up. So maybe some.
Yeah, so I have a note here to be making sure we've, I've identified that date versus the election date that we would.
Right. I know some people that are running like to be at the polls the whole time, so.
Right.
Just something to consider.
You betcha.
Okay, anything else on calendar that will be at our next meeting? Alright, declaration of a parking ban during a snow, snow emergencies. We usually read this out at, in our December meeting and the snow doesn't usually beat us, but it's this year. Does anybody have that in front of them? They can read through it.
I don't actually have that in front of me, so, but I think.
I don't remember what it was.
Find if there's specific wording on that. So I think you're really just being asked to provide during snow emergencies that there is a parking ban in Millville consistent with years past.
Yeah.
I did do a temporary one night parking ban. For the chief. He just needed something official for the parking ban during the last snowstorm, so.
Yeah, I don't remember what we did previously. If we voted on it, or if we just said it's winter, we may call a parking ban for. Usually we call them for twenty four hours at a time. As needed.
Yeah, so it's a parking ban during snow emergencies. It's not a parking ban all winter.
No, no.
So should we make a motion to have parking bans during snow emergencies? And that way we don't have to kind of do it. Okay.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion that we'll have a parking ban in the town of Millville, Massachusetts that will coincide, remember, a snow emergency is solved within Massachusetts.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright. Onto old business. We have some roads that we need to discuss.
Right. So it's roadway acceptance that was approved at town meeting. And, you know, town council has been doing, has done a title search. And has now provided a motion, which is for the, and I might take it out of order, the order of taking. And I don't know if you got that in your packets. I can read the motion that you're required to do. And it will require three of the members of the board to sign that. And, and, and then separately, the yet to be located Mylars of the drawing will require one selectman and one planning board member to sign those Mylar drawings. So I guess I'd be looking for the order of taking motion to be voted on tonight. And there's a document that needs to be signed by at least three members of the board, okay?
Okay.
And then separately, a, a motion to approve the chair to sign the Mylars once available. The Mylar drawings that we're hoping the planning board will be able to locate.
Okay, Peter, if you want to, sure. If you want to read through the verbiage and one of us will move it.
Yep. So the, the motion would be that the Board of Selectmen vote to issue, issue an order of taking to acquire permanent easements for Herto Road, Rondon Road, and a portion of Albert Drive. And drainage easements in the subdivision such as shown on a plan entitled roadway acceptance plans of Herto Road, Rondon Road, and Albert Drive in parentheses, STA zero plus zero zero four plus six seven point two six in Millville, Massachusetts, dated eleven to two thousand seventeen. For the purposes of the acceptance of said roads as public ways.
Okay.
I'm moved.
Alright. Was that Kevin or Andrew? I thought it was Kevin.
I did.
Alright, Andrew, I'll take your motion. Anybody like to second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Now we have to have three people, I'll go down and sign because I'll be there signing other stuff as well. But anybody volunteer to go down and sign. They're not now, they're not ready yet.
Yeah, I'm off to all this week, so.
So I'll let you know first, I'll be in tomorrow and I'll have these out in a folder for the things to be signed. So it'll be out on the, on the little table, okay?
I can go in tomorrow as well, right after lunch, like at one o'clock.
Perfect, yeah, it'll be there, yep.
Okay. Now, I tried to use my fog today when I went and none of the doors are open. So who should I call or where the door?
So I, I'll have to get back to you. It sounds like it might be a dead battery or whatever it is that runs those. I'm no expert, but.
Could be more than that too. Could be more than that too, Jen.
Right. I'm not allowed in the building.
Yeah, there you go. That's got to tell you something, huh? And so the separate thing on this is just that you vote to approve the chair to sign the Mylars when available.
Okay, so I would make, also move jealousies here.
Alright, and second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright. Next item, order taking. What is? Zico's, there we go, auctioneer, yes.
Yep. So I, including your packets, you know, legal counsel input. I had requested whether it was something I could just do or whatever, and I can. But, you know, there's the release. It's pretty extensive release, but at the end of the day, council was not overly concerned about the verbiage. In fact, had no real concern about the verbiage. So it's ready for signing and you can either authorize me to sign it or again, the chair.
Does it need two signatures, Peter, for a town of Millville?
Well, he has two, two points for it, but one person can sign it. You know, if the, if the board took a vote to authorize one of us to sign it, that, you know, there's, there's the vote. It's sufficient.
Okay, I'll make a motion that Peter Crusoe Town Administrator signs the Zico's auctioneer release for twenty Dupreter Street. Release of all claims.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, Peter, you can sign off on that. Alright. Alex, do we have anybody in a public forum?
Nope. Nobody's in. We've got two people watching, but no comments.
Alright, let me just give a thirty seconds or so, just in case. Let's move on to selectmen's reports. Anybody have anything for selectmen's reports?
I just want to do a quick shout out to Rep Soda who came out on Sunday to help the American Legion do the wreath across America thing.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Same as last year, where you went to different spots and.
You know, we did just one this year because of the amount of snow and it was just, it was. But he, he, he's a trouper. He came out, showed up and we appreciate that.
Perfect.
Like two quick updates. One, I did get an email from a resident regarding cable and cable service and things like that. I don't know what we can do with that. And I haven't looked at it in a week, I will admit. I looked at it when I got it and then didn't see anything. So I've, Peter, I'll forward it to you and I'll BCC the rest of the Board of Selectmen and see if there's. I'm not sure if we have any.
I could speak, yeah, I could speak historically. So basically, we, we send our cable out to bid. And I forget that, is it five years or ten years? Andrew, do you remember? Maybe five, I'm guessing.
Five.
I'm guessing on the years. So we send it out to bid and typically, nobody bids on us. Verizon doesn't want to come in. Nobody bids on us because we, we don't have enough residents, so there's not enough revenue for a company to come in. So we're usually only stuck with one company. That's how it's typically happened. So, and we had a cable committee in the past where they tried to go and get more companies to bid on us, but it was unsuccessful. So, and I don't know when the next bid is up.
Okay, no, that's helpful. I at least really have the information back, but like I said, I'll forward it to the board, BCC, everyone. Peter, I'll put you in the two and, I know. And then the, the other thing quickly, and Peter knows this, I thought for sure he would have said this in the opening. But I don't know if Peter got a text by did from Senator Fatman. That the ambulance funding to get signed into law, he's chasing that down to make sure it went through. So that's kind of exciting. It's still, it's looking, you know, more and more likely. He said it was ninety nine percent likely before, so now it's even more so now. So that's kind of exciting.
Ambulance funding meaning a full ambulance or the, or just a couple of items that were requested in the past?
Two hundred fifty thousand dollars, which will cover the purchase of an ambulance.
Good.
Yeah.
And so what will happen i- if in fact this process is moving along, which it sounds like, and he did say ninety nine point nine percent. Sure it was going to happen at.
Well, and he signed, and then the Governor Baker signed it, so that's.
Yes, yes. So that's, that's wonderful. So what would happen is the state would provide me an agreement that I would, you know, the town would sign on behalf. You know, I would sign, I did that with the earmark back whenever. And then the state CFO signs it, then they issue the money. And so once, once the CFO signs it, that really is the trigger that we now have the appropriation to go and purchase an ambulance. And the chief has been very active, looking to get what will be a, a demo ambulance, because we have to spend the money before June thirtieth. And so there are some demos out there right now, one or more of which would likely meet the needs of the town. So we think we'll be able to do that within a, within all of the time challenges that, you know, six months to get an ambulance. Normally it's a good year to eighteen months to get a new one made up for you, but there's a handful of demos out there. So Senator Fatman really has stepped up, you know, for your town beautifully.
That's great.
Yep.
Good to hear. Uh, anybody else have anything?
Yeah, so I have two small things. The first one was from the last being, I asked you, Peter, what the for the police, when we got a grant, what the, I forget the exact wording of the that part, but there was a part where it was kind of vague on what it was buying. I just wanted clarification on that. Didn't know if you had any update on that.
I forgot. So the grants that they've gotten in the, in the write-up that we looked at at the last meeting. So that's right, you were asking about those three or five. They're really reimbursements for the costs of traffic enforcement of particular types during particular times of the year. That, that's the general gist of what I got out of it. I, I don't think I have that readily available, the list to look at. But there were, so the grant was for some discrete items, right, as you would call some equipment. And then it was for traffic item, you know, re, traffic enforcement as described in what the chief had written for us. I might be able to find. Let me see. Cause that's a good point. I did talk to the chief about that. I can put my hands on it. That would be a good thing. I don't know, I may have to follow up with you, Andrew, on that. And I think that's what, I'm not putting my hands on the chief's write-up.
Yeah, that's fine. The other thing was some, kind of, was on my email. The emails have been coming in kind of sporadically. And certain emails I'm not getting, even though I'm ninety nine percent sure that I'm doing it. Cause I, I did a test where I sent myself an email and it never came. So I'm not sure if there's some sort of like thing that's blocking certain emails or something, but it's kind of something I've, I realized and kind of.
So if you could send me an example of something that you sent that didn't go or you know there was an email that came to you and you didn't get it initially. And I could have our, you know, support folks look into that because they can track that down.
Andrew, did you look in your junk email?
I did, yeah. Yeah, cause I, I sent myself a test email. I'd looked in the junk and everything. This didn't pop up for some reason.
Yeah, we can look into that.
I don't know what happened.
Also will say that I, you know, I, I didn't see it directly, but Gmail was down a couple of times in the last week or so.
Yeah, last Monday.
So I don't know whether that was a factor in your issue.
Yeah.
I do have things look different on my phone than on my laptop, which I think is kind of weird.
Mine always has.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of the email system that we have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm glad it's not just me. It's not just you, Andrew.
Yeah, it's hard to follow on your laptop, at least for me. I, it's hard to follow on the laptop because there's so many, and it feels like it's in the wrong order. Yeah, so I try to look at it on my, on my phone.
That's, that's usually where I'm looking at it too, so.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay.
Anything else?
Can I just go back to the cable conversation? Can I just go back to the cable conversation, just to put a plug in that we, as part of that, there is a committee, I forget the specific name of the Cable Review Committee that, uh, Tim is on, and I don't know, there was somebody else that had, uh, expressed interest, I don't know. I can't remember if, we might have appointed, you might have appointed somebody a year, in the last year or so. Um, but I'll put a plug in for that, so for example, the person that reached out to you, uh, might be interested in being on that committee. And, uh, you know, it is a couple, I think it is a two year, you know, a couple of years out still when the thing finally ends. Up for renewal, but you know, there's opportunity to negotiate certain things in that process, so. It's, it's worth getting some more people involved if we, if there are anybody interested.
No, this is, I didn't even think we could do anything, really.
Yeah.
But it sounds like there are things that can be done, we don't know if we'll get the result that we want, but you can at least take some action and try.
Alright, I have, um, for a selectman report, I just want to discuss the tax work-off program that we go down at town meeting for senior citizens and veterans, I know it's a difficult time right now to try to get people engaged and essentially hired um, with all of the, um, restrictions we have with COVID, but I just wanted to put it out there specifically, um, to you, Peter. Um, when we're doing the budgets to just put a, you know, a little, little something in somebody's ear saying, hey, if you need this, I know it's not, you're not gonna ask to hire somebody for this, but if it's a small item, you know, think of putting a request in, um, for us to use in the tax work-off program. And I know there's been a few things that have come up, you know, with the planning department, I don't know if they can use somebody or even the building department. Again, it's very difficult right now, especially those seniors are more susceptible to the virus, so you have to be very careful about that and I get that and I understand that. But I, I just want to know where we are at the plan of the program at this point in time.
Yeah, sure, so I, you know, I met with, uh, Tina, the Senior Center Director, it was the Senior Center had put forth initially this, uh, initiative, um, and we sat down, talked about things and sort of, you know, where she's coming from, where I'm coming from. And they've since, uh, you, you know, enlisted Pat Finn, stepped up to help, uh, from the Senior Center perspective, so that's great. But basically, uh, a couple of things I'll say that, we're, we're not gonna let anybody in the building until there's some more comfort.
Right.
In the buildings, frankly, until there's more comfort in what the world is truly like, okay, so. We're at least, uh, you know, three months out, I would say, before that comfort level is likely to be there. In it, in any of these, a thousand dollars at thirteen fifty an hour, uh, an hour gets you seventy-two hours of work, you know, if you spread it out over the year, that's six hours a month, okay? Um, and I'm having the treasurer, the treasurer and the, uh, assessor put together sort of the doc, what's gonna be needing to sign somebody up and get the tax rolls, you know, covered and, you, you know, that, it's a ten ninety-nine, the thousand bucks is a ten ninety-nine item. Talking to Dave, our assessor, um, any work done in calendar twenty-one will then go against the twenty-two tax bills, okay? I have touched base with many of the department heads and just sort of bounced off, you know, geez, we, we could get you, I mean, there's a couple of different ways you can, you can approach this. My approach and we sat, you know, sat down with Tina and I sort of told her what I, I, the way I thought about it, you know, it's, it's ten bodies available for seventy-two hours in a year, okay? And, you know, I look at it and say, Cherry, Town Hall, TA, Board of Health, Planning could use two bodies in some fashion, right? Building could use one body, Highway could use one body, Treasurer Collector could use a body, Library could probably use two bodies. Council on Aging could use two bodies, uh, maybe Police could use a body, but then you get into some specific you know, restrictions and, and, and maybe unlikely, uh, Town Clerk, I said, she's got a sort of an assistant held her off for the moment of the body identification, uh, Assessor Accountants and MES, I said no for now in terms of that. And sat down and went through that with, uh, Tina and she thought that kind of made sense, but it's all flexible, it's all open. And, you know, when I say bodies, it's, it, I look at it, it's gonna be great, I've seen it, you know, in Sherburne. And it was kind of cool to see somebody coming in on a periodic basis and they'd sit at a desk and do some tasks that were often useful. And more importantly, they had the richness of the engagement with seniors and, and or veterans, so it, it will be good, but it, we're not gonna have anybody coming in for several months, that's just reality.
Right, and I'm in agreement with that, but I just want to make sure that we have the structure in place where we have, you know, when we're ready to start calling people interviewing people, what the process is, I, I want the structure in place.
Yeah, yeah.
And I just want to thank Pat Finn, cause I know she's been pretty involved with this, yeah, she's very good, so, and I know she has the good background for helping us.
She's good at the structure part of it, so.
Right, okay, she's our, she's our girl on that, so I haven't asked her yet, but I. Yes, okay, I'll just periodically be looking for updates on that to see where we are, and I just wanna, you know.
Yeah, the next steps, as I say, is getting sort of like, what, what are the assess, what's the assessor gonna need from, of information? And what's the treasurer gonna do to get them basically on the, uh, signed up for this, so. Those two pieces I should be seeing in the near future.
Good, alright, and that's all I had for.
Yep.
My, uh, questions, anybody else have anything? Alright, Town Administrator Report.
Sure, I'll, I'll just go a couple of things, uh, you know, a few things, um, back on the ninth, I did sit in on the Medicom at board meeting, um, and that starts January first, where we're part of it. Uh, we won't necessarily be in, actually serviced by them, because the logistics of equipment and, uh, fiber optic cables and I don't know what else that they've got to do, are, are not necessarily gonna be in place, but we still will be part of it. And the chiefs have figured out how to cover ongoing with Menden, uh, in the interim. In the first year, the Menden TA will be one of the board members, it's the, currently today, it's four towns and the TAs are the board members, then under the new deal, as you may recall, we will alternate with Menden. First year, it'll be the Menden TA is the board, voting board member, and then the second year, I, the Town Administrator of Millville is the uh, voting board member, so that's ongoing, it's good, good talks, still some stuff up in the air, but, uh, State nine-one-one is the key funding of the whole thing and, uh, and, and provides the opportunity that the town of Millville has to be part of this. I did, as I mentioned earlier, sat in on the planning board meeting, saw some challenges that they're dealing with that may be limited resources, maybe resources, I'm not sure which, but, um, I want to be able to help them do their job better. One of the items that came up was they were looking at the, uh, they had on their agenda, talking to the folks that lifted luxury to deal with traffic flow patterns and special permitting and that sort of thing, so. The chief and I met with them to go over their plan and all, and had them alter their plan, they still, under their special permit they'll need to address hours of operation, they'll need to address the traffic flow, they'll need to address, they want to have a sort of a drive-through thing by appointment, so they can provide, you know, their product, uh, not, not only through the retail store with whatever yet to be determined hours of operation, but anyway, we went over there and I, I know the planning board had some issues, uh, questions. And so they're in an ongoing discussion. At the same time, uh, that, later that day, I went to Garden Wonder, so it was my day for marijuana. And they're just waiting for the Cannabis Control Commission to approve, um, you know, get, grant them the final license and that's any day now, although I guess they're subject to, uh, when the next meeting of the, when the Cannabis Control Commission next meets. And they had, they, they had a meeting canceled in December, so I don't know, you know, they're ready to go, they're just sitting there, everything's, they got product waiting to come in. Uh, the fit up's all done, all of the permits they need from the town of Millville are there, so they'll hopefully be dealing with some uh, grand opening in the not-too-distant future, and, you know, I think the town's, has embraced all this, so, uh, I hope people are anxious for their success. Had a conference call with, uh, MES today, the chief and I, uh, and Brian, talking about they want to do some alterations to the traffic flows on some of the streets for some of the hours, this is yet, still yet up in the air, so I won't get into the specifics on it, but it is, uh, in response to their plan, which I guess the, the BMR committee members approved last week to start, uh, for next calendar year, they'll be having, you know, K through, pre-K through two or three, uh, both towns at MES, and then a slight modification to that in the second year. So that means there's more buses coming to MES and they want to alter a little bit of the traffic flow during the hours of the bus transit. So there'll be more to follow on that, the chief and I and Brian will be, uh, meeting with the bus folks and taking a little bus ride after the first of the year to see some of the specific challenges. Uh, we talked about the town hall hours, I'll just remind folks, we're closed for the foreseeable future. Um, and right now, at least through the first week of January, closed to the public, no, no ice cream window or anything. To protect the folks inside and, uh, protect the folks outside at the same time, so. We can meet by appointment and hopefully people can do whatever business they need to do electronically, uh, and or by mail and if totally necessary, uh, you know, meet outside type of thing, so for example, I know the town clerk has a uh, marriage thing that she has to go through and she's planning to do that next week outside of the building for, and it takes her half an hour. So hopefully the weather cooperates for her. Also, had, uh, before Dr. DeFalco, uh, announced what he was doing with his, you know, the school closing. He, he did involve, uh, town administrators of both towns and he did involve the Board of Health, and I appreciate the fact that he involved us and kept us, uh, in the loop, um, and I mentioned to him, I thought, you know, it's tough, nobody can sit really second guess the decisions you make, and I think they've done a very good job of trying to keep kids in school as often and as much as they can, so, you know, I support, uh, the decisions he's been making, his team have been making, they've done a good job. The other thing, Christmas, uh, and New Year's hours, the, uh, the holiday falls on a Friday under the town's personnel bylaws. People get to pick a day, uh, they have to use the holiday within thirty days before or after the holiday that falls on a non-work day, and so the gang, uh, has, uh, decided that they want to use um, the Eves as that day, so that means the town hall would be closed on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, cause I have no takers to be there, quite frankly, I actually had offered to. So it's not additional cost, it's, uh, using, uh, holiday time that is due them and they're using it on those days. Whereas I had suggested I would have released them a little early that day, but this is actually cheaper for the town, how's that?
Sounds good.
Okay, so that's my report and I'm sticking to it.
Alright. Any questions for Peter on any of his items? Do you have any, uh, items that fall under our forty-eight hour rule?
Nope.
Okay, um, Peter, you'll email me tomorrow when you have stuff for me to go down and sign at some point.
Sure will.
Uh, will you post our December twenty-ninth meeting for seven PM?
Yep.
And notify us if there's an extension and we do not have to show up.
You betcha.
Thank you, and our next regularly scheduled meeting is Monday, January fourth.
Right.
Merry Christmas to everybody, happy new year and, um.
Be safe.
Yes, happy holidays to all of you.
Merry Christmas.
Looking for a motion to, uh, adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight oh four PM.
Second.
Alright, I'm surprised we ended that early, good job.
I am too, I thought this was gonna, everyone kept saying bring snacks.
Right, right, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you, have a good night, Andrea.
Merry Christmas, thank you.
Merry Christmas, take care.